All right, thank you.
All right, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, folks, thank you all for coming out tonight. This time I opened the June 21st Board of Supervisors meeting. For Stanford, the pledge of allegiance and the case please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic which contains one nation, I'm going to go, individual liberty and justice for all. Why?
That's great. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us all together. And mostly today, we want to thank you for the much needed rain. Yes, it's your love to soak in the ground and replenish the earth and help lift the crops back up. Thank you for looking out for the county last Friday during their storms and keeping everybody safe, even though we did have some loss of trees and property. All that can be fixed and repaired and replaced. And thank you for the good neighbors that were checking on each other and helping and being with the linemen and the first responders as they dealt with the trees in the road, the lines down and all the other hazards. As your will, Lord, just please be with everybody in this room this evening. Look out for them, help them, allow us all to have a safe trip home and help us as we go through the county business this evening. Amen.
Amen.
All right, well, I certainly want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's kind of a messy, raw, raw night. But the approval of the board agenda. Does anybody have any concerns, additions to the presented agenda? Has anybody got a need for a closed session? I have none. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make permission.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, it brings us to the minutes of the May regular meeting. Any questions, concerns or comments on those? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented. Don't let anybody speak at once.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Same thing with the financial reports. Any questions, concerns or comments? Hearing none, I will also entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve all reports as a block.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion on the floor to approve the financial reports as a block. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Folks, that brings us to the public comment time. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you can. State your name and address before you start. There will be a public hearing on an item on the agenda later on. So if your comments pertain to that, I wish you would hold them till then. Hey, Thomas Smith.
Bob Smith, 13301 Bend Creek Road here in Amelia. I am here tonight just to give you a brief update on report on what happened at the Business Appreciation Luncheon or Event in May. This is the second annual. We partnered with the Chamber to put this on. Last year, we had 198 people, participants. This year, we had 268. We picked up 70 people. And with everything else, the more you do it, the better you get. So this was, I think it was much better prepared, much better organized than it was last year. So we hope to do that every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Michael F. Whitaker, 12110 Genito Road down in Mason's Corner in Amelia. I have three seemingly disparate comments about economic development and tourism in Amelia, beginning with the Interstate Bike Route 1. Last week or last month at the regular meeting, it was mentioned that a new bridge is in the future over the Athletics. I would just like to bring everybody's attention to need to perhaps have a little bit bigger structure with a bike route immersed in that because that's a valuable asset for Amelia County. It will probably be only increasingly valuable as time goes on. Interstate Bike Route 1, which goes from Pennsylvania to North Carolina and at the corner of Genito and Genito where I live, I have a concern about that. So it's something we ought to keep in the long term. Also, on the 8th of July, at the Alf meeting at the library, Mr. Deal talked about the comprehensive plan and improvements there. And it's a good to continue from an economic development and tourism aspect for Amelia County to proceed with updating that plan, but in consonance with its formal structure over the last several times, excuse me, of its, of the tenure of that. That is, economic development down US 360 corridor with nodal developments in the Amelia Courthouse area in Manboro, Chula and Judersville. And that will also enhance possibilities for tourism, economic development. One thing that may ought to be included of that, somebody, it'd be useful to discover and possibly rezone for preservation, the several pegmatite mineral formations in Amelia County for which the county is famous for. And finally, on the EDA proposed light economic park off of US 360 at Richardson Road, while the economic development for general purposes and industrial light or heavy otherwise may seem to go against a little bit of the comprehensive plan. I think the foregoing reasons I gave are a good reason to approve the proposal of the Richardson Road Light Industrial Fabrication Warehousing Park. And possibly, given the vociferous and somewhat emotional comments of nearby neighbors with stipulations to accommodate landscaping, provides those for some of the people that would move in there to help persuade their objections. And finally, this last approval of the EDA proposal on Richardson Road is also a rationale for that includes a relatively low impact on the landscape down there with light industrial as an encouragement of the US 360 corridor use, even though that is a little bit farther to the east than the comprehensive plan that suggested for the Judersville area. And finally, the increased tax revenues and job possibilities of, for the county through that would basically help the economic tourism development portion two through increased revenues. And I thank you for your time and also for your website. Here's a copy of that.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
My name is Wendell Scott. I live at 11151 Chula Road in Amelia. I'm here to speak in reference to 604, the highway Chula Road that runs through there. I feel like the speed limit is excessively higher than what it should be. I feel like it needs to be reduced. And I also feel like that it needs to be put a solid line with no passing through there, right there coming off of 360. I've almost been hit several times with my farm tractor. A lot of people don't seem to understand that farm trackers have signal lights on them too. And my signal light, if I'm making a left turn, my right signal stay on Alma and my left one is blinking, but they don't seem to notice that. And I think it's, it really needs to be addressed and looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Allison Cruz. I live in Judersville. I'm here tonight just to share a little bit about some emails that were exchanged earlier. For a long time, folks have been asking for well test results regarding the landfill and things. And so it's funny, not funny, that when asked, Taylor Harvey can act like he doesn't know what you're talking about, but then you get the documents and you see that he's included on all the emails. It's really frustrating and it doesn't seem, I mean, not transparent doesn't even seem accurate. And then I believe, Mr. Gore, in your comments, you said personal attacks are not unnecessary. I think you meant either are unnecessary or not necessary, but these are not personal attacks. These are professional inadequacies, to say the least, in my opinion. So I just don't feel that the safety and health of the citizens of the county really means anything to the person who's at the head of the table, working for the Board of Supervisors, which I think people forget. And I don't know, I just, I hope we can come to some more better communications and understandings. And I just, it's very saddening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. See anybody out there? Is that everybody? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Thank everybody for their comments. They were heard. It brings us to Ms. Worley to VDOT report.
Good evening. To provide an update on our monthly activities, our area headquarters will resume primary mowing at the end of this month, hopefully when it stops raining, whenever that happens. They've been busy overlaying asphalt, doing asphalt patching in preparation for the surface treatment crews, which will begin in July. And they've also been doing ditch work, pipe replacements, and also cutting back some site distance complaints at intersections that we've received on various routes countywide. From a traffic studies perspective, Route 628 Butler's Road has, the signs have now been installed for the statutory 55, 45 for truck speed limit. Route 614 Dennisville Road, that speed study from Five Forks Road to West Creek has been completed and we have received concurrence from law enforcement. So that signage plan has been sent to our crew for installation. I will add Route 604. I believe we've done a speed study recently, but particularly the sections that were mentioned for closing passing zones. I can have our traffic engineering group take a closer look at those and review any updated speed data that we have for that. So I've made a note of those concerns. From a construction standpoint, the latex mix contract, they have various routes that they'll be working on starting in late June. Slurry seal operations have been completed for this year in Amelia County. Plant mix, Route 609 Royalton Road is scheduled to begin next week, I believe. And primary routes have been completed in Amelia County as well, any of those. One additional route is full depth reclamation. It's a similar treatment that we did on 614 to address that rippling effect that we had there. We're continuing that full depth reclamation on 614 from, starting from the Nottaway County line to the southern end of Ponton Circle, which was kind of the second worst section that we had identified. And that will begin in August and our crews will perform surface treatment following that. And then finally, Route 621 Folks Bridge Road, the rural rustic project that you all added to your secondary six-year plan last year. Our crews are in the process of replacing pipes and doing slope mowing in anticipation of that surface treatment project, which the surface treatment should begin in August after, hopefully you all approve the budget tonight to fully fund the rest of that project in the secondary six-year plan. Those are all the updates I have. If there are any questions?
One question. The gentleman mentioned 604 Bridge.
Yes, sir.
Is that? I hadn't heard. Is that?
Yeah. I made a note of it. So I think I mentioned it last month, just saying, I think someone asked about it. Our bridge team has identified it for replacement. They applied for funding, state of good repair funding for a replacement of that bridge. I must be upfront and say, we don't know if it's been funded yet. So it might be several years before that came to fruition for a replacement. But I did make note of that about the desire for a bike lane. That's certainly something that we could bring up in the design phase, once we got to that point, if it is on the Route 1 bike corridor, that seems a worthwhile thing to do. So.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Royalton Road?
Yes, sir.
I seen a machine sitting over there the other day. I come through, it pulls up the old asphalt.
Yes, sir.
Takes it up.
Uh huh.
When y'all put the new asphalt down, can you make it a foot wider like you did from the substation to Pine Grove Church? Cause that really helps moving up there with trucks and stuff.
Right.
You meet, that one, you made the road about that much wider and it does make a difference.
Yeah, so I don't know that they'll do asphalt that wide, but those contracts always include shoulder stone, or sometimes they'll use millings, the extra millings instead on the outside of the asphalt to increase the width of that shoulder.
It's heavy truck traffic on them roads, especially with a new project is getting ready to come.
Right.
In the future.
Understood. Okay.
I have one. I got a call about Will's Road to Burton Road.
Okay.
Off of Namazin.
All right.
Tree trimming.
Okay.
They say they're hanging out into the road. When you meet somebody, you're, you're in the trees.
Okay. All right.
Right. All right, gentlemen, what are your, what are y'all thoughts on the six-year plan? I was under the impression that we, we did fund 621, which is Folks Bridge Road last year.
So it wasn't fully funded in last year's budget? So fiscal '24, which starts in July, is just the remaining amount that will fully fund that project. So you added it to the secondary six-year plan last year? All that we're doing this year is saying the money that we'll receive in fiscal '24 will apply it to that project. So that's all the resolution is for, is just approving this year's budget.
What is this, what is the status of Stony Point Road, 620? Are they going to pay that? I think we, I thought we talked about that last year too.
You added that to the secondary six-year plan as well? So that'll be the next one that we fund?
Okay.
In the secondary six-year plan?
And the, the cost of that was $96,000 off, can I read that right?
For Stoney? I don't know that I have Stoney Point in front of me.
I'm talking about 621. I'm showing $59,000.
Okay. I don't have that one on with me. All I have is the fiscal year '24 allocation. So we're applying $157,768 to, oh, I'm sorry, I had the wrong project. We're applying the $157,768 to Route 620 Stony Point Road. I apologize. Folks Bridge was fully funded in last year's budget.
Okay.
Yep.
So our part is?
Approving that $157,000 for this fiscal year, just to say that you want it to go to that project that you all already approved.
Okay.
I have a note, like, I was in a meeting this morning and they, the subject come up about VDOT and some of these grants and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
And that the, so many projects are coming in so much higher than was been allotted. The question is, is it affecting these roads like some of these other projects? I mean, is VDOT being affected? I know they're being affected.
Certainly, yeah. We certainly are being affected. These projects are all ones run out of my office with our maintenance crews. So we're not as impacted by market fluctuations because it's our crews and our labor costs that are being included. We have definitely seen, seen an increase in materials, so stone and tar. But at this point, we've still been able to complete these projects in the budgets that we provided.
That's good to know.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on the resolution to take?
Ask one question, too. So was this, so there was the draft advertisement in here. Looks like it had been advertised twice. Did that get advertised as many times as required?
Yes.
Okay, because the dates had also June 20th, so it wasn't clear to me if that was.
Yeah, it was. Rebecca said that, but she's not familiar with our.
As long as it answers yes.
It was, yeah, it was advertised. And it was also posted on the, at the circular clerk.
I just couldn't tell from that draft. Thank you.
What's the board's plan?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. He's a motion on the floor to approve the funding to pave.
I'll make, I'll clarify. Proposed a motion to approve the FY 2024 secondary road improvement budget as presented.
Okay. Motion on the floor, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Worley.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Harper?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harvey. We are currently in one of our busiest times of the year, which might surprise you since we just finished the school year. But during the months of June and July, we are engaged in wrapping up the past school year, completing state reports and preparing for the upcoming school year. At the present time, our summer learning academies are in full force. They started on June 6th and will end on July 13th. Our summer feeding program is running in conjunction with our summer school program and children in Amelia community can also come to the elementary school for both breakfast and lunch at designated times. The elementary summer learning academy has a reading and math focus for grades pre-K through five. Middle school summer academy has a focus on the four core subject areas with emphasis on English and math. And the high school summer learning academy has a focus on credit recovery and emphasizes the four core subject areas. For the first time, we are offering economics and personal finance for credit advancement. We are currently serving 147 elementary students, 52 middle school students and 90 high school students. 18 of those are in the credit advancement program. Mr. Trump will give the presentation of financial reports as well as several appropriation requests.
Good evening. Tonight I'm sharing with you the May FY 23 finance reports. At our last meeting, of course, as you know, a resolution requesting that we be allowed to carry forward remaining FY 23 funds into FY 24 was not passed. At that time, Mr. Phelps made clear that while the request is not approved, it was also not denied in two pieces of further information, specifically a clearer presentation of our carry forward adjusted operating fund, which had only been addressed verbally to this, to that point, and a more detailed estimate of our carry forward balance. Those were the two items that were requested. I've included that information in our reports this evening and hopefully you'll, if you have any questions about it, hopefully this will clear up most of what we've been talking to at that point. So getting right to it, in Funds 1 and 2, we'd anticipate revenues and expenditures to be about 85.23% at this point in the year. In our regular operating fund report, which I still provided for comparison sake, we are well below that with revenues and expenditures 70.23% of our fully appropriated budget. However, in response to your request last month, you'll see that there's an additional operating fund report with some adjustments and annotations. On this report, you'll see that our state funds budget and revenue have been reduced by $1,389,924 and $1,257,550 and 29 cents respectively. The reason for the difference is that we still have one more, we still have the month of June revenue for that construction fund to appropriate. So we'll have those two numbers matching up at the end of this month. These changes demonstrate the effect of carrying forward the state construction grant funds intended for the new CTE complex. We reflected that in the FY 24 budget. Additionally, an adjustment has been made to the federal funds budget, which has been reduced without revenues or expenditures being changed. This reflects the projected carry forward of unexpect, unexpended and therefore unreimbursed grant funds into FY 24 as well. Finally, you'll see the net effect these changes have on our county revenue and our overall revenue and expenditure percentages. With these new figures, you'll see a 6% difference in actual versus anticipated expenditures. And that might seem like a large difference, but it is much smaller than the approximately 15% difference that was shown initially. And several larger projects, such as the painting at the middle schools, some tile resurfacing at the middle and elementary schools, and the purchase of the electric bus, all of which appropriations approved earlier in the year, are still in process. So this gap will shrink considerably as those projects are completed and those invoices are paid. With this in mind, onto that second point of requested information, my current projected carry forward balance of approximately $385,000 for FY 23. This figure is slightly larger than what was projected at the school board meeting on June 12th, and this shift in projection speaks to the nature, the difficulty of making such projections with extreme accuracy, as there are several factors that can, can and will still impact this figure. The most notable and significant of these factors. The most notable and significant of these factors is sales tax revenue, which is currently lagging and could come in well under the state's projection, unfortunately. Over the past three years, we have averaged seventy seven point four one percent collected of our total sales tax revenues on the year through May. Applying that figure to our total collected to date and our projected sales tax revenue falls one hundred thirty one thousand, seven hundred sixty four dollars and seventy seven cents short of that state projection. However, since our board meeting, um, you know, that last one we had of just last week, sales tax figures for June have come out. Um, and while certainty helps, um, they still kind of reinforce a slightly pessimistic outlook. Um, significant changes can still come in through June or through July and August as we are on a two month accrual basis. We finish up our sales tax uh crediting back to FY twenty three through those two months. Um, so there's still possible chance for notable impacts in sales tax to the positive and the negative. So we're taking a pretty conservative view of that sales tax projection at this point. We'd like to think it'll come in lower, which would, you know, bring that carryover figure a little higher. But it's possible that it's going to come in, you know, it could come in at a more of a deficit than that, so we're just kind of trying to play it safe and be responsible. Onto our simpler areas at least. Um, through the month of May, textbook fund expenditures stand at thirty one point six seven percent. That leaves a projected four hundred fifty four thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and thirty four cents to carry forward in FY twenty four as these funds do each year. Um, similarly, cafeteria revenues stand at nine hundred ninety five thousand, forty three dollars and seventeen cents. And expenditures stand at nine hundred thirty six thousand, nine hundred sixty three dollars and twelve cents for a profit margin of eight fifty eight thousand, eighty dollars and five cents through May. This figure is a bit high as it does not reflect a payment for a new oven, a new combi oven that we had purchased to replace a failing oven at the O'Kenny High School. Um, and that item was received in May and the invoice will be paid this month, so we'll see that change reflected a bit. But we also have, you know, still have reimbursements for the month of May that'll come in through June and that'll be balanced there still, but cafeteria revenue and expenditures run a month behind as we finish up our invoices and claim the meals served in that month. We do have um some appropriations to discuss, as Dr. Harper mentioned, um, but if you have any questions on the reports, I'd be more than happy to tackle those first.
Any questions? So you're saying you got three hundred, how much did you carry over?
We're, we're anticipating once all, all things are said and done, approximately three hundred eighty five thousand. But as I said, that could, you know, sales tax could push that up slightly higher, it could bring it down a little lower. Um, there's some other factors involved there as well.
Okay, so my question I had.
Okay. I can, I can speak more to some of that when I get to the uh, that last appropriation request we have. So if you guys are ready for me to move on to our appropriations, these, some of these should be fairly simple as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We present for your approval this evening our request for an appropriation of five thousand dollars to federal revenue into one expenditure line within the federal funds budget. These funds have been awarded to A C P S through the recruitment incentive for public education, which is a sub grant program out of the state's S R three allocation. These funds provide a retention bonus for school divisions hiring to fill certain instructional positions and no local matches required. Do you want to tackle them one at a time or do you just hear them all upfront?
Um. Just hear them all.
Okay, sounds good. Our second one, we also present for your approval an additional request for an appropriation of five thousand dollars to federal revenue into another expenditure line within the federal funds budget. These funds have been awarded to A C P S through the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics teacher recruitment and retention incentive. This is another sub grant program of the state's S R three allocation. Funding was appropriated to attract, recruit, and retain high quality diverse individuals to teach science, technology, engineering, and mathematics subjects in Virginia middle and high schools experienced in difficulty in recruiting qualified teachers. Again, no local match is required. Our third one, these uh, we have a third appropriation for an award, award uh to A C P S out of federally funded school based mental health grant. These funds will be used to support school based mental health services through staff recruitment, retention, and development efforts. No local match is required for these funds. The total is a hundred and forty two thousand dollars for this grant. Um, additionally, funds not expended in June will be rerequested for appropriation in July, so they may be carried forward in FY twenty four. This grant is kind of a funny one, and the, the award term is actually January through December. Um, we had some planning we had to do, um, and this is really just to give us some flexibility to begin, you know, placing orders against our current grant funds. Um, because they haven't been appropriated, this isn't included in any of our previous financial reports. Um, but, you know, we'll probably have to come back in July and add this into the federal budget, but we, we can place an order for something now with the appropriated funds. We'd like to be able to do so to speed things up a bit. And finally, we have our carryover resolution re-presented. If you ask for some more details, I'm hoping we'll be able to answer those questions or presenting that resolution again. We are re-presenting this for your consideration. Um. Yeah, resolution for a commitment by the Board of Supervisors to provide A C P S with carry forward funding from FY twenty three into FY twenty four. As we stated last month, such commitments make larger capital expenditures, such as the school bus cut from the FY twenty four budget a possibility when funding is significantly tighter in the coming fiscal year. Taking this action now also allows A C P S to plan proactively to replace or repair aging vehicles and pursue larger projects that are difficult or on shorter timelines. One piece about this I have to speak to because it speaks to the carryover portion as well, um, is one of the difficulties created with later appropriations to carry over. If it's going to come, having it come as early as possible is really helpful because um, it gives us some leeway in managing some of our supply train, chain disruptions that we still face. Um, especially in some of the high demand items um that we're trying to purchase that actually already been, had appropriations from this board for. Um, an example we have is the weapons detector system that you gave the appropriation for carryover for back um in March. Because of the late date of that audit, um, of receiving the audit, which we had said is kind of stipulation for when we'd receive funds back, we couldn't even place that order until late March to April, doing our research, doing our due diligence, gave us a really close delivery timeline. We believe we're still going to receive those in June. But if they come back and say, hey, you know what, demand for these has picked up, we can't get them to you until July, we'd be faced with the choice of saying, can the county appropriate the funds to us to say, you know, that's savings from this year that isn't spent for a project that's been planned through this year. Um, but if it doesn't come in in June, our budget can't sustain that without the carry forward coming to it next year. Um, and that's one thing that we are struggling with right now. Um, and, you know, the safety of our students is paramount. We'd have, we'd hate to have to say we have to cancel this order um, for this specific item because we can't guarantee it'll be something we can work in our budget this upcoming year. So we are asking for that consideration to be placed as well. We don't have many such things in that situation at all. That is of one of the primary and paramount concern to us because of the nature of it and the significance of the purchase. Um, but it is something we wanted you to have as we actually consider this request.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing a figure.
Of course.
Um.
I will say, I appreciated, once, once y'all asked for that information and I got a chance to start looking through it and kind of rebuilding that sheet and kind of showing it out a different, a little bit differently. I don't know if y'all looked at the, the updated figure with kind of the explanation of how this piece has worked. Um, I actually appreciated that opportunity to do it and a good reason to do it and show it to y'all because it's something that I know is important for y'all to understand and I, I just appreciate that opportunity.
Can we, um, since we have a figure of three eighty five, can we add that to this resolution? I would, I would feel better seeing that in the resolution that we will, we will return to carry over for three eighty five.
That would be wonderful. The only concern I have of that is if the weapons detectors part comes in late, because that, the purchase of that unit is approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
We can always, we can always revisit later.
True.
I think, I think it's, I, I think Mr. Phelps has a great point to work with what you, what your best estimate is at this point.
Yeah.
I think we could even say up to three eighty five, you know, that's, it's not to exceed the actual carryover.
Well, and.
And it's your responsibility not to exceed your actual carryover.
Exactly.
And that's your current estimate of three, three eighty five.
Mm hmm.
I think that's a very fair, I think that's a very fair offer.
Yeah.
Being made there.
And that's, and that gives us the opportunity that if they come in late, we know we can cover it and we're safe. If they don't come in late, we still have that up to three eighty five to do the school buses, the things that we need, that we would appreciate that very much.
It is, it is. And if it, you know, if, if the carryover ends up being more than that, the revisited it at a future point.
We definitely could.
At, at there and.
And that gives.
Separate subject.
And that gives you all the leeway as well to look at the financial realities of the county at that point too, and be, just as we've been cautious with our spending and looking at where things might come in with sales tax and our figures, we also know that you have to do the same thing for all your constituents.
Would you like a motion somewhere down? Would you like a motion on the, through appropriations first?
Just do the appropriation. I'm, I'm still thinking, yeah, do the appropriation.
Make a motion for the three appropriations for the federal funds in the amounts of five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars and one forty two, one hundred forty two thousand uh for approval.
Thank you, gentlemen. There's a motion on the floor to approve the appropriations for the amounts that Mr. Easter shared in discussion. These are no local match. Everybody knows there's no local match. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. I said last month that, that I didn't feel right just without knowing the number.
Yes, sir.
You told us a number. I can't find that number nowhere in the stuff you gave us, but I'm, 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 I'm safe if we put three eighty five, up to three eighty five in the resolution.
I understand.
Like that, that gives the citizens some, a number that is not going to exceed, and it may be, could be less.
Well, I especially understand when you, looking at the previous reports with that construction funding included, it could make the carryover look like it's two million dollars, which is something that I definitely understand. You're being hesitant to say, just sign a blank check, say, here you go, carry forward to the next year. That's not the case, and I can give you some more details on why there's still that gap because we have payroll that goes through July for quite a lot. Looking at, looking at our month, our monthly expense, expenses. Um, and FY twenty two as a completed year, um, our, a rough average of our monthly expenditures is at one point four million dollars. In post year, which is mostly paying teacher salaries and paying those invoices for items that may have come in and that last weeks of June was approximately one point one million dollars. The majority of our budget is teacher salaries and those get paid out through July. And there's a lot of products that happen over the summer too, so that, that figure will draw down. Um, the exact number will draw down too. I think I've been, ideally, I'd love to have to revisit this and say, there's a little more than that. We'd like to look at it later. But we also appreciate anything we can get in this. I appreciate your thoughtfulness on this.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you, Dr. Harper. What's the board's plan?
Just to be clear, that's their resolution request. You don't, you can, don't have to approve their resolution. You can just, we can just make our own motion, which states whatever, whatever we want.
Right.
Regardless, that's just their suggested request.
Is that fine or do y'all want a resident signed resolution? Y'all fine with just a motion to give you the carryover up to three hundred eighty five thousand?
I think, I think that um the resolution was how we were approaching it because of previous conversations between the two boards and administrations. Um, Dr. Harper, don't want to.
It's fine. It serves the same purpose.
Yeah, it's however you are comfortable proceeding.
And I think that's whatever you're comfortable with.
Say, when I make a motion that we approve, return to carry over, we'll do it as a resolution as y'all presented, and we'll put up to three hundred eighty five in, in the resolution. I would be fine with that, as long as that three eighty five is there.
Yes, sir.
Motion on the floor to return the carryover to the school of up to three hundred eighty five thousand. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries three to one, three to two. Thank you all.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Good evening. Um, I'm Katarina Spears. I began serving as the library director over at Hamner Public Library in late April. And I'm here this evening to request the reappointment of three library trustees whose terms expire this month. Um, the first is Ruth Ashton, representing District Two of Amelia County. Second is Virginia Whitaker, representing District Three of Amelia County. And the third is Carol Hicks, who represents District Four of Amelia County. All three of these trustees are highly valued and active members of the board. They regularly volunteer time and services outside of just the regular board meetings. Districts one and five are both represented by board members whose terms do not expire until twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Um, I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize one of the library's trustees who is not seeking reappointment, um, but has provided the library board with many years of volunteer service. Uh, Beatrice Head has represented District Five of Amelia County on the library board of trustees since July of two thousand and seven. So on behalf of the library and the full board of trustees, I wanted to publicly thank Ms. Head for her sixteen years of dedicated service. I know she'll be, she'll be missed very much at regular meetings of the board, though I hope she'll remain a regular library visitor. And if I may, while I'm up here, I just wanted to give you a brief program update. Um, this Friday at two thirty P M, the summer reading program will feature a magic show with magician Rob Westcott. Um, it's a wonderful event for all ages. The magic show has been moved to the gym in the Parks and Rec building because we've had so many people RSVP. So thanks to Parks and Rec for their flexibility and support. Um, the change in venue means we have additional room if more people would like to attend. We just asked that people register through the library website or call us so we know how many to expect, but the event is free, of course. And on Tuesday, July eleventh, the library will be celebrating its fiftieth birthday with an ice cream social from six to seven P M at the library. Then Friday, August eleventh, um, thanks to the support from Mr. Harvey and Mr. Deal, uh, we'll be screening a movie for all ages out on the lawn at the courthouse. All of these events are free, open to the public, and paid for in full by the friends of the library. Um, and details of the library events can always be found on the library website or the Amelia County community calendar. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Let's move it on to the sheriff's office.
Can we make those, can we, we need to reappoint. Can we do this reappointment?
Ruth Ashton, Virginia Whitaker, and Carol Hicks, I think, is a block.
Yes, we.
Reappoint.
I got, I got lost and.
All, um, all, all three of them serve well, and they've been recommended for reappointment, which speaks to margins as well, so I'll make a motion that be a reappoint, all three of them.
Thank you, Mr. White. Motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Ashton, Ms. Whitaker, and Ms. Hicks back to the library board. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries and. Mr. Harper, can we do something for Ms., Ms. Head for her time served?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, it brings us to the sheriff's office request. You want to speak to it, Justin?
Yes. Uh, good evening. We were able to obtain ARPA funding for law enforcement, which was in the amount of two hundred sixty three thousand dollars for equipment uh budgeted towards the sheriff's office. We're asking for that to recreate it into a line item for us to be able to spend it and invoice it to the county. It's no local match. It's all a hundred percent funded.
All right. Good job getting the grant.
Thank you.
What's the board's plan?
I, I appreciate them going after it and Justin, I, I discussed with him and, um, it's, it's going to buy some great equipment stuff to protect our officers as well as, um, some good public safety equipment too. Um, I think, I mean, not only did they get this grant, but it's going to be used wisely. Um, for some stuff, you know, I, I would say the extras, but it's also stuff that that you put on that wish list that could be well needed items, so I would like to make a motion that we approve it.
Thank you, Mr. White. Motion on the floor to approve the, the grant appropriation of two hundred sixty three thousand. Appropriation of two hundred sixty-three thousand, no local match. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. I got wind of another grant, the sheriff's office named the school is working on. It's a fully funded grant to put a SRO in the elementary school, so. We'll wait and see what comes out of that. All right, that brings us to our board members, updates of the activities, committee reports. Mr. Robinson, you want to go first?
Uh, last month I had a PSR meeting, CPMT meeting. Attended the, uh, Juneteenth celebration Saturday. And, uh, that's about all I done.
Okay. Mr. Easter?
In addition to the standard meetings, yes, the Juneteenth celebration on Saturday was great, well-attended. Wonderful weather turned out awesome. So that was a great opportunity sandwiched right between storms on Friday and the rain. The rains then coming in later. So they turned out great, good entertainment, and we bought our fair share there, went home. Wa- wallowed a little lighter, which was nice to share locally. And it's a good opportunity to remind folks about the fair coming up starting tomorrow. Let's see about the rain, but tomorrow through Sunday, new timeframe for the fair as well. It's a lot of good activities going on around the county.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Mr. Jones?
I, uh, also attended the Juneteenth, uh, get together. It, it was a very informational, uh, learned a little bit. A lot of folks there, seeing a lot of old friends. I went to school well. Enjoyed myself and my wife and I had good food there. Had CRC meeting this morning. And basically, the only thing going on on that is they're getting ready to move to Keysville in the next several weeks and, uh, that's, that was basically it.
Mr. White?
Uh, I attended the business luncheon spoke about earlier. It was great, beautiful weather, beautiful day for that. And so I do appreciate that from the business side as well. Juneteenth celebration was great. The weather was perfect. I have had a couple of, uh, radio, our monthly radio update for emergency services, radio system and our radio detailed data, uh, review last week, which was pretty thorough. Everything looks like it's still on schedule on time and Motorola is sure enough that, um, that when we place the orders and need the equipment, it'll be there. They say that they're stockpiling it and be here when we need it. Um, I think from the board side, uh, probably next month. Um, maybe September, there'll be, I mean, August, June, August. Um, one or two more variances that we will need for the tower situations. And after that, um, once all that's approved, I think it's just a free-wheeling ride, just waiting for Motorola to, um, put it in and expected turn-on date is the end of twenty-four. Other than that, just normal citizen interactions, phone calls, emails. Made a few citizen inquiries on, on different things, nothing, nothing major.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, had to pee my regional jail. Focusing on me on good behavior. We got, only got twenty-eight residents there. That's, that's down. I also attended the Juneteenth. It's quite an honor to, to speak there. I appreciate that. Attended the radio, radio meetings. Do you have a question on the tower? Mr. Harvey, you might can answer this. Can we maybe start soliciting some cell phone vendors and custody Verizon, see if they might be interested in some space on that tower or when we design it, make sure we can.
River streets already.
We can, we certainly will be, when the time comes, if it's, if it's allowable and available, we certainly will be insisting.
Cut the cost down.
And Mr. Mr. Easter mentioned the fair. Everybody needs to show up tomorrow night because Mr. Robinson is in the dunking booth, so.
You spoke too early. That's for later.
He did. I had, I had to burst it. I had to let it go. They gonna leave now. It's all they'll wait to hear. Just bring plenty of money. Lots of it.
Rain or shine, right? It's open rain or shine, right?
I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna be wet anyway.
That's right. Y'all be about to get wet.
All right, that brings us to our next part. Uh, Mr. Deal, rezoning request. For the Economic Development Authority, we've already had the public hearings on this, so.
You want to speak to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Last month's meeting, the Amelia County Economic Development Authority brought a request before you for rezoning from RR three rural residential to M one industrial district for the property that is commonly referred to as the Richardson Road property, as well as two additional parcels that are owned by uh, the neighboring entity JGL LLC. The board, when discussing that, uh, after the public hearing, uh, indicated they would like a little bit more of a, a firmness behind the EDA's willingness to have a buffer between the, uh, development area and the developable area and the neighboring subdivision. The EDA met last week, uh, on the thirteenth, Tuesday, and in their meeting, they voted, uh, to approve a two-hundred-foot buffer that would not just run along the width of the subdivision, but run the entirety of the northern boundary. Uh, they, their intention is to, now that they voted to approve it, their intention is to have that drafted uh, in, uh, recorded into the deed language as a restriction, restrictive covenant on the property. Uh, I think you guys are pretty familiar with all the other information, so that's the only update at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add?
Nope, I manage any questions again.
Sure. Um, I appreciate, I was supposed to say, I appreciate that, the confirmation to do as a restricted deed or deed restriction. I think that's a good step forward and addresses the concern people had about putting something in writing. So number one, thank you. After hearing a couple of the residents, they, close neighbors speak last month, I asked them to reach out to me if there was anything else specific that they wanted to see addressed. Only one resident reached out to me following last month's meeting. That one resident, uh, was really clear that his one top priority was the buffer. So thank you for addressing that. And so I think that's the, you know, again, I think that is the, the highest priority. There is still, you know, neighbors, and this is not uncommon with any rezoning, the closest neighbors to anything, you know, are not necessarily pleased with it. Our job and yours as an EDA as well as look out for the highest and best interest for the county and the community as a whole. And that does not always mean that everyone is going to be happy, as we all well know, but, um, you know, it is to do our best job for the entirety of the community and the county. So I appreciate that and thank EDA.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the Richardson Road rezoning for the EDA. I mean, it's a benefit for the county tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Motion on the floor to approve the EDA's request to rezone the Richardson Road project. Any discussion? I, I just have one thing. I haven't really looked into the deed restrictions. I, I think that's a, that's a pretty safe way to do things. Um, I kind of liked, so it has better points in the proper system, but I think it gets you to the same point. So. All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the motion by Mr. Robinson, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank y'all, gentlemen. It brings us to a special exception permit for Mr. Yoder. Brady, you want to fill us in on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board supervisors. Esteban Yoder, the applicant, has requested a special exception permit for a stationary sawmill per section three twenty-five dash six point three of the Amelia County Code. Uh, this is for property located on the north side of Route three sixty. It's off of Saint James Road, which is Route six seventeen. The specific address of the parcel is two-two-nine-two-zero Saint James Road, or otherwise identified as Tax Map Parcel twenty-eight dash three dash one. The property is zoned A five agricultural, and the Amelia County Comprehensive Plan shows property located in the rural preservation area. Uh, Mr. Yoder had previously contacted staff prior to me coming on board to discuss his desire to purchase a portable sawmill, a mill with wheels, and, uh, begin milling some boards on the property. The applicant in January began operating this sawmill, and at the time, uh, he was operating under the byright use provision for a portable sawmill, which allows you to mill uh, timber on the property or from properties that are, um, located immediately adjacent to surrounding the property. The way that we have, uh, regulated this ordinance in the past is a logging outfit moves into an area, and as you guys know, it's best for them if they can log a few tracks in, in one area. And if someone is going to mill that, uh, log timber on site, then they can operate with that byright use in certain districts within our ordinance, the A five is one, RP five is another, to put a portable mill up, mill those logs there for the duration of the project and then move on. However, if you want to get into the operation of doing a stationary mill, meaning operating it on that property for the foreseeable future, you have to come for a special exception permit for a stationary sawmill. And, and our use, uh, also includes and chipper. And so interest in his operation and his mill grew really quickly, and so he came back to staff and uh, voiced his desire to go for the stationary sawmill use authorization via special exception to allow him to use that site permanently. Uh, the operation features a band mill. He does mill hardwood and pine. Uh, right now, approximately two trucks of logs are delivered a week. Um, the dust and chips from the operation is collected into a tractor trailer and removed from the site. Uh, currently, the applicant has a fuel-powered mill, but is interested in operating an electric mill if this request for a special exception permit uh, is authorized. Uh, Ms. Ashley, if you'd like to put the presentation up, I have some slides on the matter. The planning commission heard this item at their public, uh, at their regular meeting on May twenty-second. There was a public hearing for the item. Uh, they voted to recommend the board, uh, approve the request on a ten-o vote with one commissioner absent. This is a pretty, uh, far area, a pretty high aerial view. The parcel that is highlighted with the black and silver dashes sort of in the center of the screen is the four-acre parcel that this mill has been constructed on. There was an existing structure on the site, uh, a primary structure on the site. And then now the mill has been placed, and then since, uh, the applicant has built a pole barn around the mill to, to cover it. Um, this is a closer-up imagery. The applicant also owns the property directly to the east. So his house is located on the parcel to the east, which is, I believe, twenty-eight dash one dash two, or dash three dash two, sorry, and the parcel that's subject here for this special exception request is twenty-eight dash three dash one. That structure depicted was from orthophotography of last year. It's the structure that was located there, pre, uh, located there prior to this structure. Uh, that, this is just the flood map, as you guys like to know. I like to show the flood map in just its relation to waterways. This is, uh, the white box in the center of the screen with the teal square is the address that has served that lot for some time at that structure that existed. Um, and then the area to the north is Little Creek, and then there's also, of course, uh, Creek, uh, significant distance to the south. This is the structure in, uh, that's covering the portable mill. The mill, again, has wheels on it. There's the trailer that, uh, the sawdust is being loaded into. This was in the midst of them milling logs. Um, I showed up unannounced, uh, you know, applicants give us permission to inspect the property. I showed up unannounced. They were milling logs. It was the applicant and his two sons, um, as his two employees. Um, working alongside him to mill logs. All that was stored on site is what you see in the picture right there. Those boards are boards that are being sent to storage draft to be made into flooring. And the, uh, larger six-by-six items to the right of those boards are being sent to Crew Virginia to be made into railroad ties. Um, pretty much right after he mills them, they are transported pretty quickly onto their destination. As he's not operating a kiln dryer or doing any treatment of that sort. Um, so as you see, the, the, the mill was cutting right now as I took this picture, and so you can see the site conditions in terms of like the clarity of, of air and stuff like that around it, and they were in the, in the millwork. So, uh, with that being said, um, the, again, this is a special exception use permitted in the A five district. This property is in the A five district, and this applicant's requesting that special exception use for the stationary sawmill. This use is just for a stationary sawmill and chipper. Does not authorize him to do any sort of uh, treatment on site or any sort of large storage, um, on site in terms of like a pulpwood yard, storage yard. It's just for the sawmill and chip.
How close is the twenty-eight thirty-three from the, the mill? That's the next lot over. Looks like there was a house there. The bottom right-hand corner was twenty-eight, three, four.
Twenty-eight, three, four. How close? I'm not sure of that exact distance. I would assume just based on that picture, it's probably a thousand feet at least. Uh, maybe eight hundred feet from that house to that other house, eight hundred feet, maybe. I could, I could measure that on the map and confirm. I'm, I'm saying.
Have they complained about anything?
No, sir. In terms of neighbors that live in, uh, around, I've not had a phone call or a comment from anybody regarding this operation.
That type of mill setup, what I've had dealings with them. Sixty days. It could be gone and pine trees planted there. You never know it was, well, you would know it was there, but a year, year or two later, you wouldn't know it was there. Because that, that's nothing like what we got out here. Them mills aren't that complicated. That's the simplest milling you can have, and they can be just like that, too.
Which it sounds like that was the biggest misconception that the absentee landowner had at the public, the previous public hearing was not understanding the type of mill this is.
And no treatment.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing.
Ms. Pierre, I'm the board. My name is Alexander Boyd. Uh, I'm an attorney with the law firm, Herschel Fleischer in Richmond. Um, I've been engaged by Ms. Audrey Walker, um, who is the owner of parcel two-eight dash three-one. Um, that is the parcel that was shown just now lying immediately to the, the west, that would be the left in the image that was shown in the overlay. Um, that parcel is approximately seventy-two acres. It is also zoned A five. Um, and it consists primarily of unimproved land. It's, it's a mix of hardwood, standing forest, uh, and some smaller details. Um, I've been asked to speak on her behalf in opposition, uh, and as, um, Mr. Deal noted at the at, at, at the meeting that was held on May twenty-second, um, my client did attempt to voice concerns, um, regarding the approval of this mill. Um, she attended remotely. Um, as I understand, there may have been some, some, some issues with the connections. I'm not sure how much of her opposition was actually heard, understood by the members. Um, but I would note, um, and I agree, obviously, that, that the, the county's, uh, uh, zoning ordinance does, uh, permit this use as, as a special exception. Um, under the use designation A five. I would note, however, um, that the section of the county code, uh, that's set forth in section three twenty-five dash four point three applying to special exception permit applications requires that a sketch plan of development and, and other information be provided that is sufficient to enable a full determination of the facts of the case, the impact of the proposal on the surrounding properties. And I think that's worth noting that language because the application that was submitted contained no such information um, that would have enabled the planning commission or this body to fully assess the impacts, not only to my client's property, but also to other neighboring properties. Um, if you look at the application itself. If you look at the application itself, entry on the application form simply states that it's not located adjacent to other residential structures. There's nothing in the application that indicates there was any sort of assessment of any potential impacts to the neighboring homes that were shown on the overlay just now, to the neighboring properties, or indeed, any infrastructure like county roads based on the frequency of use of the logging trucks that are bringing material either to the mill from it. And so, I would submit that if the failure to include this information is jurisdictional. It means the application is not properly before the commission and is not properly before this board. Second, with regard to zoning, county zoning ordinance is applicable to A5 property designation under Code Section 325-6.5, requires side setbacks 100 feet for agricultural uses. I've reviewed the recording of the meeting last month. And Mr. Yoder stated at the meeting that his shed structure is 50 feet from property line. The mill, I believe that we all agree, is an agricultural use. It's not a residential structure. It's not an accessory structure. And as such, I believe it would violate the setbacks. So, unless there's been a variance approved or requested, I think that is also a jurisdictional issue that makes this application premature. And finally, I want to note the standards for the special exception that are set forth in Code Section 325-4.2. Subsection A provides that a permit may be granted if it is found that the location is appropriate, not in conflict with the county's comp plan, that the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected, and that necessary safeguards will be provided for the protection of the surrounding property, persons, and neighborhood values. And under subsection B provides that the governing body, the board, may impose such reasonable conditions as it believes necessary to accomplish the objectives of this chapter through our deuse, screening, lighting, et cetera. I would submit, gentlemen, that this stationary mill may be in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan. I would note that under the currently published comp plan, 84% of county's residents responded that they, that one of the things they like best about living here in this county is its rural character and openness basis. And in addition, under the comp plan's goals, policies, and objectives, item one, that objective is stated as protecting the rural character of the county, including its scenic beauty, excuse me, scenic beauty. And subsection three, focusing development in economic development areas. And the objective of the rural preservation area, which is where these two properties were located, is to promote existing practices. So, to the extent this operation impacts rural character and is not an existing practice, I would submit that it's not in keeping with the current policies that are stated on the county's comp plan. Obviously, the applicant has a right to use his current, you know, mill as a portable mill. And he's doing so, understanding that demand has intensified. He's seeking a permanent use authorization. I think the issue at this stage is that there was not any information presented to the planning commission regarding the impacts of the neighboring properties. The question's been raised, what's the distance of the homes that were shown to the east? I recognize that other residents may not have complained about noise. But as I understand, in viewing the record and the reporting of that meeting, is there was not a fulsome discussion. There were some concerns raised about, is this wood being treated? If so, that would require a separate analysis, given the concerns of the chemicals. But there wasn't any sort of rigorous analysis that I could tell regarding, how long is he going to use it for just this use? How many trucks is he going to have coming in? If so, how long is that going to last? What's the impact of these trucks on county-funded roads, transportation? What's the impact of the neighbors? Are there any, you know, bridges or other structures that might be affected by overloaded trucks? Things of that nature. It did not appear that there was any sort of analysis of those likely impacts. And I think that's the issue here. So, I would submit that in some, there has not been a basis established for the planning commissioner, this potty, excuse me, this body, to determine that the permit, if granted, would not adversely affect the public health, welfare, and that there are, in fact, adequate safeguards in place to protect the surrounding properties and their values. For that reason, I would ask that the application is denied or passed by, and that upon reapplication, the commission consider impacts of traffic and other concerns to the surrounding properties. And the alternative, if the board decides to approve this permit, I ask that be appropriately limited so that if operations do change in the future, further applications are required. And I'd be happy to submit a written summary after this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at this map right here.
Yes, sir.
And from what I can see, their property has been cut over. Timber's been cut.
On 28-31?
On 2831. This is cut over by this map right here. Okay, let's just say that if this mill was in operation then, them loggers would have went to them first to buy this, to buy their timber. Because it's economics, less trucking, more they're going to pay the owner of it. Two, did anybody complain about them log trucks hauling their logs to a mill? They had to run up and down a state road.
Certainly.
So, now you're saying that people are going to complain about these here trucks going to their, to their neighbor's facility, yet they cut timber and had it sold, and log trucks had to haul that down the road?
Well, I-
We didn't hear no complaints.
I'm not asking the board to speculate as to who might complain about what. All I'm saying is that the county's code-
I'm just making a point.
Yes, sir. I fully appreciate that. And I'm just making the point, at the request of my clients, that the county's code has a standard. And it says, here's what's necessary for a special exception permit to be granted. And it doesn't appear that those requirements are met.
Well, one of the points you're making on behalf of your client is about cutting timber being in opposition to our comprehensive plan. The value of your client's land is based almost entirely on whatever timber is on her land. So, if she doesn't like timber being cut, then apparently she wouldn't like the value of her land. My question to you is, when, when did she live in Amelia?
I would submit that-
I'm just asking-
She's not a resident.
Has she ever lived in Amelia?
Her family has owned this land, as I understand, for approximately 80 years.
When did she live in Amelia? Is that a question?
I don't know if she ever has.
When did she visit? Because none of your arguments actually showed any knowledge of Amelia or this area. And I would say that it therefore means she doesn't know what she's talking about in her, what she owns.
I think the concern is that i-if a permanent stationary mill is approved, and it becomes permanent, and the operation's expanding, and it could expand to more than two trucks a week. It could expand beyond simple long, uh, simple cutting. It could expand into treatment. I think the primary, the biggest-
That wouldn't be allowed by this.
Well, the biggest concern-
That's already been stated at the previous hearing.
And I appreciate that. I just think the concern that she's got is, is really if it becomes a permanent mill and it's operating on an unrestricted basis in terms of hours, that if she decides to move back, if she decides to build or sell, I think a reasonable buyer who's looking to build a residence, say, or even if they wanted to subdivide it, would have concerns about having a mill located right next door. And I think that would affect her property values. And certainly, I agree that there is value in timber. And a reasonable person, if you're going to subdivide and build, one of the things that you might do is sell the timber. But if I'm looking, or if a buyer is looking to buy property, say, for residential purposes, I would submit that the, having a mill next door is likely going to impact the willingness of a buyer to buy for a certain price. And that might result in a lower price or lower value. And so, recognizing what values the county has and how it values this kind of practice, I would just submit that until there's been some analysis of how it impacts the neighboring properties, it would be inappropriate to approve it. And I'm not saying that they wouldn't withdraw their submission in the future if there is that kind of analysis. The opposition really at this point is that has, there does not appear to have been the kind of analysis of those impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, he's got it right next to his house. It's not that far from his own residence.
If I remember from the planning commission, I think the Howard's operation will be from 7:00 to 4:00, 7:30 to 4:30, or something like that. Three days on, it will be weekend.
I think part of this issue is, this is very known quantity for those of us who live in Amelia and understand what this is. The kind of quote-unquote "analysis" that's being requested is kind of irrelevant. It makes no sense in this type of issue, if you know what you're talking about. But I'll leave that advice to Mr. Gore.
To the public hearing.
Anybody else like to speak?
I thought I saw the owner come to the door like she was going to speak.
My name is Audrey Walker. Audrey Washington Walker. I grew up on that farm. In case you didn't know, I grew up on that farm. I have come back to visit that farm, and visit that farm, and visit that farm for years. You might know my father. His name was Randall Washington. Okay? My seven brothers and I grew up on that farm. My father left it in my care. I pay taxes on it every year, every year. And I don't think anyone should invade that farm with any kind of chemical or anything else that originates from that timber. Now, it seems that the committees are very persistent about accomplishing certain things. But everyone has rights. I own that farm. I pay taxes on it. I have a right also. Okay? And I do think all rules and regulations should be followed by Mr. Yoder or anyone else. And I expect, I expect the committee to make a just decision following the laws, which Mr. Gore has spoken about. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Gore, do you have any insight on this, some of the-
Specific to, I could, I could touch on a couple items. And then, if I haven't addressed your questions, let me know. One issue that came up had to do with setbacks. You know, staff has determined this to be, it's an accessory to the barn structure so that, under the ordinance, that's a 100-foot setback, not 150-foot setback. But further through the special exception, special exception can, can implement standards different than the default provisions in the ordinance. So, even with 100 feet, I don't think that's necessarily what would be limited by special exception.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah. So, the agricultural structure provision in our ordinance is for a structure that is built under the agricultural exemption. So, the state code allows for ag exemption permits to be granted to a structure that's primarily to be used for agricultural production-related activities. What that means is that that structure does not have to receive the proper or the customary building inspections. So, they have to fill out a document applying for that exemption. This structure was not built under that document. This individual pulled a building permit for that, meaning there was a primary structure on the property. So, it was noted as an accessory structure, being that it's a pole barn. It's a 60-foot-long, 30-foot-wide pole barn. No walls, no heat and air, no nothing. It's a pole barn. The portable mill is parked under that. So, this applicant tomorrow could move the portable mill somewhere else, and he could come in and pull a building permit for another structure and build, you know, another structure as, and in this regard. He would be allowed to do that with that portable mill. He's not building, the mill is not changing. It has wheels on it. He's not building a huge building for the sawmill. He's built a pole barn to act as a weather cover over this, over the sawmill. So, it is not defined as an ag structure. So, that means it does not have to meet the ag structure setbacks. Our ordinance defines ag structure setbacks to be a lot more significant than a primary or accessory structure, because an ag structure can be built without building inspection. And our ordinance doesn't want someone building a structure that isn't inspected because of state code provisions right up near the property. So, those increased setbacks are to accommodate for that.
Anything else, Mr. Gore?
Yes, sir. The application question, the individual did submit a site sketch. And of course, when the planning commission reviewed, they had a, they had a detailed picture of the property. Plus, most of the planning commissioners had driven down Saint James Road and looked at and seen the structure where it was, had to tell where it was located. So, in terms of submitting a conceptual site plan, what we require in our, our application is a plan showing boundaries, dimensions of the property, width of the budding, right away, all of that, and it's a may be required aspect of our application process.
And the special exception permit would- I need the job. The special exception would, would cover that he, it's not going to be any treatment. It's not going to be any more buildings. It's not going to be any large piles of lumber. He's going to bring in saw, push out in that building.
He can, yep, he can mill and chip lumber only.
They, they chip the byproduct on saw. Basically, what they chip is-
Exactly.
They use 100% of the log.
And that, in his operation, it's pumping it right into that trailer, and that trailer's getting taken off-site.
Okay, I have another question. Is this building have any concrete in the floors?
No, it's dirt.
It's a pole barn on dirt.
Yep.
Just like on 90% of the farms.
Yeah. So, his point on sketches, you're saying it says we may require-
He provided a sketch.
But I just say, it says may require, yet either way, he did attach a sketch. He did include a sketch. So, again, moot point.
And it's all conceptual, too. We can't, you know, conceptual that, but we-
But it's also, we have the pictures of it, so it's also reality.
Yes, yes, sir. You're correct.
Okay. And the point about the chemicals, so she brought that up at the last month's public hearing with the planning commission, and then again tonight. I don't, do you have any idea where the chemical thing keeps coming up from? And we've said there's no treatment. This is all natural milling. There's no chemicals involved.
The applicant was concerned about treatment. I mean, sorry, the applicant, the individual who spoke was concerned about treatment of the logs and if they were going to be treated in the future. If the, if the operation was going to involve, evolve from just milling logs into boards or into something where it'd be treating and drying and all these accessory, other uses. She was concerned about that evolution potential of the operation. But she also mentioned formaldehyde coming from trees as a concern.
All right. So, let's talk about the possible evolution. I think you addressed that last month. But if that were to occur, any kind of treatment, et cetera, they have to come back for additional permit. Right. I just want to, I just want to say that aloud up here again, too. That would have to come back. That's not included in what we're being asked to review or approve. That would not be allowed under what we're being asked to approve, correct?
We're approving him to keep the mill that he has there stationary so that he can bring logs in from properties that are not immediately adjacent or surrounding his house.
Right.
But properties from other places in the county to mill those logs. That's what he's being approved for with the special exception.
Can I ask the adjoining landlord to clarify her comment then on the chemicals? Because I don't, I don't understand. I don't know how else to address her comment, her concerns with the chemicals. I'm asking Hannah.
Sure. Can you, ma'am, can you clarify your-
Can you, ma'am, can you clarify your comment about the chemicals since we're, since that's not part of this and we're not allowing any kind of treating of the wood? Nor
It's only a small need to a thing.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, you're not talking, you're just, I just wanna be clear, you know that's not part of this approval. Okay, I just wanna be cl, I just wanna make sure that we were clear. Okay. All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we're clear about this, this approval. I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, we be talking about millions to do treatment and this sawmill will be big enough to do
To, to miss all this point, though, I mean, it, it is a fine line allowing heavy industry in the middle of nowhere. We all say we want it on three sixty, I support it on three sixty, but it's not, it is, but it isn't heavy industry, you know what I mean?
Right.
But to, to her point, I would not be okay with it being anything beyond cutting logs, you know, because that's, that's when you've stepped over that line of, you've, you've certainly crossed that line at that point. Um, right now, it's a natural product being turned into a natural product. And, and with it being limited to the portable sawmill, the, the, the scope and the scale of it is extremely limited. You can't add a second one or a third one or a fourth one. And even the sheer size of the property alone to a degree limits um the volume even, so, but yeah, so I, I, you know, I, I would not be okay with anything other than what we're allowed, what we're approving now and and if it come back for anything else, I, I would say that that's time to move the operation to
A different location.
Three sixty, you know, somewhere, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that question.
I, I share some of the same comments, this is, this is no more than just what it is and we're not approving anything else, so anything would have to come back before us and it's not big enough to put any type of treatment, it's really just made, the saws involved, a couple loads of weed.
You had a third, was there a third point from the attorney about those? What did you cover the? I phrased it like the review of impacts on other landowners, et cetera, is that a, I'm not sure how you
Yeah.
If, if you covered, you're saying that's covered in what you're only applying on that's
Yeah, I think
I think
The commission and staff have sufficiently reviewed the great application.
Make sure we cut you off.
And, and this isn't the first individual use sawmill, so I mean, we, we do know immediate neighboring and environmental impacts.
He got one.
So, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It's just kind of what we, what we do is
Or the hour, I'm sorry.
That's, yeah.
The hours, where are they written at?
No, Mr. Yoder spoke that in the planning commission meeting. It's not, he didn't write
Not written in stone.
Condition, it was not made as a condition.
So technically, he could cut on Sunday.
Unless the board makes an appearance.
Yeah.
He uh, I know, dude, he's a religion, I don't know that's gonna happen. Saturdays will be very doubtful, too.
Yes.
Right. But the seven to four, I would have a problem with that, cause I know most of them guys and uh when they can work, they work.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think that's gonna be a big issue here about that, because them little bay and saws that they use, they're not very loud. We got one sitting there with the bomb. We could put it out right here in the yard, start sawing logs now, basically what he's got, got a big Honda motor on it. So I could, you know, my cousin does. Don't get no idea, so it's flat.
Yeah, so that he did, so, yeah, in, in the planning commission, they addressed hours, they did address vol, volume of truck traffic, they addressed the r, the road usage, et cetera, and I I remember all of those, the dust, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I never
Gentlemen, y'all satisfied?
Mm-hmm.
What's the place of the bullet?
I make a motion that we have passed this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones, motion on the floor to eh uh pass the special exception request for the sawmill, and I'll just add to be no more than what we're seeing right now.
Yes.
Oh. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we got a special event permit for National Night Out.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the sheriff's office has applied for a special event permit. Um, it's for the national public safety event, uh known as National Night Out. It'll be held on August first from six to nine P M, and I believe that's a Tuesday night. Um, they're hoping to have five hundred two thousand attendees. Um, of course, the sheriff's office did meet with the sheriff's office to review the permit application and uh they've gotten all uh other respective approvals. Hopefully, it's a great event for them in the community.
Okay, Oldman's got any question?
Um, if I could just comment, help sell it real quick before we approve it, um uh it's gonna be the, the third year again in the courthouse square, um and this year, they're, they're planning to, to change it up a little bit to add some, some new things, um as well as uh hopefully to grow. Uh, just reiterate that it's a completely free event for families, communities, uh the food's free, any, anything you come to get there is free, it's kind of hard to believe that we can pull something off like that these days where you, it doesn't cost you money, but you can take your family out and enjoy the evening at no cost, um thanks to some local businesses and local individuals that are, enjoy the event as well, and they're gonna sponsor it and help cover the cost of everything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. J, all right, you want to put in a formal motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor. You clarify that includes the road closure um resolution as well.
Make a motion to approve the special event permit for National Night Out as law, uh as well as the uh road closures.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve it. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Road closure for auto show?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the Amelia Presbyterian Auto Show is gonna be held, it's actually not gonna be held until November fourth, so we got a little bit of time. They applied and submitted the application, you all reviewed that at the last meeting, I had not included the road closure resolution. They will be closing down from Virginia Street um up Dunn Street to the Presbyterian Church, so it's really just that block of Virginia Street to the Presbyterian Church. Um, however, technically, they do need a road closure resolution, so I wanted to add that into y'all's agenda this week, I mean, this month.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the associated resolution for street closures.
Thank you, Mr. Easter, motion on the floor to approve, any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I completely supported, I, I think, um, just like to, uh, we should note that with um Glenn Wilkerson, the Parks and Rec, just in case there's something else in the area, you may wanna
Coordinate.
You know, coordinate, cause that does get to be a tight street when there's events going on, but
It's not a normal one for closure, too, so
Right, right, exactly, but yeah, other, other than that, I think it's great.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to the sidewalk project resolution. Looks like we are asked to appropriate two hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-six to the sidewalk, and I'm assuming that phase one is the part that is on school property?
Yes, yes, sir, this is just for phase one, so it's just for from the, the middle school to the elementary school uh in this, in this part, staff is working with the CRC and VDOT to uh apply for the, an, another round of transportation alternative program funding that would go towards the possible completion of a phase two to connect the elementary school to Amelia Academy.
This is just consistent with what the sidewalk committee planned and proceeded with before, we've just now actually received further confirmations, just moving forward, right? I mean, no change. I, what I read is no material change to anything from before.
Yes, sir, Mr. Easter, the, the board in March had uh uh approved staff to move forward in like the development process of this agreement.
Right.
This agreement has now been developed, and this is for the execution of that agreement, uh which requires an accompanying resolution. The match would be paid sixty-three thousand five oh four at the time of preliminary engineering authorization, which would basically be here real soon, and then after that preliminary engineering is done and bids are uh solicited at the time of construction award, the remaining one hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars would be paid out. I will note, just in all transparency, the project is, was originally quoted at one point one million. It increased to two point five million, which is why we're now doing it in phases, we're doing the one point one. This phase going back for more funding for the remaining funds of one point four. However, technically, the bids could come back higher than the one point one. Um, and so, but all the board is authorizing is the money that's already been appropriated and added to the capital improvement program.
Right, right, period, from, yep. Yeah, I'm just carrying it forward.
Okay, uh, we brought this up at the CRC meeting this morning. I can remember exactly how it was, they touched on VDOT projects such as this that where you got to put up, say, twenty percent of the, the total amount that is necessary. Everything is coming in way over now, so we need to check back with VDOT. From my understanding, and I might be wrong, but I don't think I am, but uh they had done some finigling in their own about how much you have to put up, because everything is coming in over big time over, cause of increasing costs.
Yeah, see, that's how we got busted in the beginning.
Yeah.
Was the increase again, and that's
VDOT, they brought that up, that uh I'm not sure exactly how it went, it was a bunch of stuff going on, but we need to check back with them, what we have to put in, because I think they were changing them figures, because everything's coming in so high.
Cause there's nothing else to do at this point, you know, like, because you have to move, you have to move this page or before you can even bid it.
All they use for the cost estimating right now is a workbook and they've done that to the point that they can do it, the next phase is to actually get engineering completed and then bids based on engineering, which
So until we do this, you can't get a bid, yeah.
And so
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's a, I, I, there's a a chance that it could come in way high and they could stall the project.
Yeah.
Even after the board has spent money, that's the transparency I want you all to know. But at the same time, if it's a project that the board wants to do, this is the next step, and if we don't do this next step, then we're not even gonna apply for round two, it'll be dead.
Well, and the problem we talked about in the sidewalk committees, if we don't do this step, then we're turning down the matching funds, and VDOT was very clear, you turn down the matching funds then you're not looked upon favorably in the next round of grants.
For the next round, right.
And that was the shoot ourselves in the foot issue.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have much.
Okay. Do I put in formal motion, Mr. Easter?
Yeah, ha, as a member of the sidewalk committee, happy to put in formal motion, we move forward with the resolution to proceed with uh the execution of the resolution related to the sidewalk uh project administration and funding. Sorry, I wasn't supposed to title here, that worked for your brain.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Easter, motion on the floor to approve the sidewalk project phase one. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Uh, next section is, we've already taken care of, which was the six-year plan. Brings us to the cash profit report, and we have a report separate. Mr. Bill, do you have any comments on that, or is that just the information?
Well, it depends, um, last month, you know, uh Mr. Gore here provided a great presentation over what had changed with the, uh, cash proper uh what had changed in terms of our ability to receive cash proffers, and that we can no longer receive cash proffers. And the board had requested that staff prepare a report of the funds that had been received up to this point. Um, that is what this report does. As of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, there was a balance of nine hundred and five thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents, according to the treasurer's office. I'd like to publicly thank the treasurer's office, every person in there, Randy, April, Wanda, Stephanie for their assistance in mining this, and I would also like to thank uh Debbie Riquetta, the permit technician and mining information as well, um because we do have a binder of everything kept, but making sure we were correct in our numbers took up some, some staff time. The breakdown on that balance is eight hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars from, received from subdivisions. So that will be re, conditional rezonings that included the voluntary cash proffer. Thirty-six thousand for solar uh related payments, that would be related to their sighting agreement and their special exception request. If I'm not, if I'm correct, Mr. Gore, the solar payments, uh, cause I wasn't here at that time, so I think that's due to their the special exception request, they have a sighting agreement allowing them to
Probably, I'd have, probably not a conditional zoning.
No, it was the special exception for the solar, yep.
Yeah.
So the subdivision was for conditional rezoning related cash proffers, the solar was for special exception related cash proffers. And then the remaining amount is interest accrued since two thousand five. The or, the proffers were first received in two thousand five, and you'll see a fiscal year breakdown of what has been received since fiscal year two thousand five. Uh, you can really tell the swing of the economy, because following two thousand eight you see two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, the proffers went down significantly over those years. However, you can see, of course, recently with the latest sort of economic boom in the housing market, we've had pretty steady increase or steady level of cash proper funding, but that, of course, could, could change, uh will change ultimately, with us not having any more proper projects or developments.
And to clarify that, that's new proper project.
Yeah.
So, proffers for previous projects can still keep coming in, is what we discussed earlier, right?
Yep, and to give you all an idea of what's out there, these are the developments that were finished.
Yes.
Yep, and the, there's only been um eight developments finished. Uh, four of those were finished in prior to two thousand seven, the remaining of which have been since two thousand sixteen, three of which since twenty twenty, so it takes a long time for these developments to get finished. Um, this is the, and with those finished developments, I believe there was a total of
Three sixty-five.
Terms of, yeah, but there was fifty-six total lots involved with these developments. In terms of unfinished proper developments, we have a three hundred and twenty-two total lots with a hundred and sixteen remaining lots that could be developed. That amounts to an uncollected balance of three hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars. Uh, however, the board should not count on that coming in, because a lot of times people buy two lots in a subdivision, so they'll buy a lot, and then they'll buy the neighboring lot, so that might, lot might never be developed. And also, some of these developments never really took off, and you'll see ones that have total lots with a lot of remaining lots, they didn't really take off. Um, so that's a significant amount of funding. So in terms of determining exactly how much funding is left out there, it's a little bit difficult, and it's probably gonna take a significant amount of time for that to actualize.
And if it comes in, it'd be a nice surprise.
Yep, and then the last part of this is just what can the board use them for? Since the county developed a cash proper policy in fiscal year two thousand four, all the developments submitted voluntary proper statements with the statement that the cash would be used to address the impact that the developments would have on public infrastructure. So the board is basically open to use all the funds, particularly as it's related to the conditional rezoning requests for the subdivisions or any impacts that those would have had on public infrastructure, so any infrastructure-related investments. The solar, I have not finished checking to see if there's anything specific, but in my knowledge of the code, Mr. Gore might correct me, there are certain items that the code lays out that those payments related to solar could be used on, and I'm pretty sure capital improvement program is one of them, and I'm not sure if the applicant had to state voluntarily what it could be used for or not.
Yeah, it depends on if there was a sighting agreement for the S U P, so we'll, we can look at that.
Yep, so that's the last part that we need to determine.
I mean, a sidewalk project um falls nicely into that category.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the solar was only, you know, thirty And the solar was only, you know, thirty-some thousand of the total nine oh five.
And solar is not restricted by the change based on the, um.
No. That's correct. So the, the changes to the, to the proper statutes only really applies to residential housing projects. And, and what we're talking about is solar, typically that's not even a rezoning, much less a proper rezoning.
Yeah. Brady, you may not know this part, it might be treasurer, the, the amount you're talking about with the forty-five thousand and some for the interest. Is that, is that a cumulative interest just sitting with it then? Or does that roll back in, has that been rolling back into general funds as it?
It's, I'm not sure how to answer that. I, I know that it's in an interest-bearing account. You know, the money is put into a revenue line, and then, of course, it's put into a, it's actually in a separate bank account from our general fund money. But it hasn't so. Yep, and so that, that cash proffer account has a separate, is a separate interest-bearing account. That's accrued that interest.
Back in.
Yep.
And we did actually reach into that account during budget time and authorize two police cars.
Right.
To be pulled out at Anna Hamelin.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm going to answer that.
Any more discussion? Thank you. Any more questions? All right, that takes us to the next item. USDA resolution. Mr. Harvey, can you speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, that's a resolution that USDA is requiring as part of the, uh, grant that Representative Spamberger was able to get for us. It's, uh, basically says we're going to abide, adopt and abide by the covenants contained in all the agreements, documents and forms required by the government to be executed.
All righty. What's the board's pleasure? We got some money out of it.
Yeah, for the clerk's office.
Yep.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Motion on the floor to approve the USDA resolution for the money received on the bank building. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. And that brings us to the personal property tax relief. The commissioner asked to have this put on the agenda.
Um, it's the regular time for the PPTRA to be calculated. Um, I have a blank, or I have a resolution with me with a blank percentage amount in there, because this is contingent on what happens with the budget resolution. Um, it's on the agenda behind me, but, um, that's going to affect this. And I've been asking what's going on with that and haven't really gotten an answer. So if y'all want to address that first, then that would help this.
I think the budget resolution was put on there as, as informed by Mr. Gore. Your was dropping the rate to fifteen percent. Am I right?
This is different. So the relief is applying the state funds that the county gets to the personal property tax program, so the car tax relief. That's what the commissioner's talking about.
Correct.
So the budget resolution, Mr. Chairman, I believe, is on there in the event that the, the board's desired to make any changes to the tax rate provision.
Okay.
Yeah. And the two are related.
Okay, so we need to change, we need to work with this one first.
It just needs to be cleared and finalized.
Well, I was going to make a motion since apparently to do it the way it was done originally, it would cost eight thousand dollars for Bright to write a computer system to do it, which is a waste of taxpayers' money. And if we knock off the fifteen percent off of the four fifteen, it puts us at three fifty-three tax rate, vehicle only, personal property, vehicle only. Then it makes it simpler for everybody, correct?
Correct.
Everybody's happy.
Everybody's happy.
Is that possible?
And then, and then, so that's the next, so.
So procedurally, that's the motion that I want to make.
That's the next item, so the chair needs to.
Discussing.
Yeah, that's the next item, but, and, and then the item that's currently being discussed could be addressed.
So we just flip the order of the discussion.
Okay. So you want to make that motion in the budget resolution? Am I hearing that right? We will have to. All right, well, let's move to the budget resolution. That's what I'm thinking we need to do. All right, Mr. Robson?
I would like to make a motion that we change the tax rate from four fifteen to three fifty-three to twenty twenty-four, personal property, vehicles only. Vehicle only.
So it's twenty twenty-three tax year.
Twenty twenty-three tax year.
And, and that would replace in its entirety paragraph J. So the current paragraph J sets the rate at four fifteen and also applies a fifteen percent reduction to the liability. After that's computed, I think this motion would replace that in its entirety.
Get a whole paragraph out.
For taxpayers, it's just.
I think the four fifteen needs to stay for general personal property, which would be business furniture and fixtures and all of the other stuff. But just put the four fifteen and say general personal property, and then the three fifty-three.
Vehicles.
For the vehicles.
Okay.
And just to be clear, it's the same effective thing for, for the citizens and taxpayers. It's the same effective outcome. We're talking about how it gets calculated and, and gets done.
So.
No, but just, we're just trying to make it clear it's happening here for those who, it's not necessarily clear what the challenge.
This is actually.
Challenge has been how to make it happen in the systems and the calculations. It doesn't raise nor lower the effect of what people are paying, is what I'm trying to clarify for those who are listening, et cetera.
This is the best for, for all of the system and the outcome, yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And, and we can clarify to the, um, citizens as well, this is the second year of the two-year allowance by the governor for this particular thing, so.
Yeah.
This will be the end of it.
Correct.
But the four fifteen stays on the rest.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Whether they're happy or not.
Yeah. So we can go back to the personal property tax relief now?
Yes, so that will make the personal property tax relief percentage equal twenty-eight point twenty-eight percent. That is going to be applied to the first twenty thousand dollars of all qualifying vehicles. And I'll just hand you this, Mr. Phelps, if you're okay with that.
So we really have.
Because what happens, yeah, just to clarify, so the state gives us a flat amount, and we just have to then distribute that across, which is why you then back into what the percentage is.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, it's a fixed amount, and it basically just keeps going down every year then, because the values.
Yeah.
Keep going up of vehicles, because the state has not increased the funding since.
Ninety-six.
Yeah, gosh, I'm trying to remember which governor it was back then.
Gilmore got rid of it.
Yeah, there you go, got rid of it. And it was gone at that point, right? But then.
I'm surprised.
Last of the year.
Yeah, there you go.
At least we got something out of it.
Yeah.
A year.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, folks, a motion on, can we make a motion? Somebody make a motion to, for this.
I don't.
Let's back up. What's the board's pleasure on this?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the, uh, per, personal property tax relief, uh, resolution as presented by the commissioner. Uh, uh, or twenty-eight point two eight percent tax relief for all eligible vehicles up to twenty thousand dollars, following the allowances by the state, as noted in the resolution.
All right, motion on the floor, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Mr. Harvey?
I have one real quick. Does that put just one year?
Yes, yeah, that's a redone every year.
Okay.
The current, okay.
It goes away after this year.
Yeah.
He gave us thirty last year, fifteen this year, as long as we wanted to.
Yeah.
Two of the things.
That, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
But that is also just this year. Every year it has to recalculate.
That's what I thought.
I jumped the track. All right, Mr. Harvey, you want to start with your report?
All right, waste management, check for the month of May, two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. We've got the CRC items of interest that were submitted. If anybody's got any questions about those, be happy to take a shot at it. The DMV select, uh, compensation for the month was thirty-three hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, we're at thirty-three thousand five seventy-two for the year. And it looks like we've collected seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the state. And we've got a letter from the governor responding to the meeting sponsored by the CRC. Mr. Phelps asked that I would read this. It's, it's, it's to Melody Foster, executive director, Commonwealth Regional Council. Dear Ms. Foster, I want to let you know we appreciated the concerns you raised with your May third letter to me. As our meeting on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three demonstrated, we want to work together to improve the situation created by the loss of jobs with the closure of the Tyson Foods facility in Glen Allen and the impact across the region on Virginia's poultry raising industry. We will continue to approach this problem from multiple fronts, and the agencies represented at your meeting, V DAX, V E D P and V E C, including the oversight and involvement of the Secretaries of Agriculture and Forestry, Labor and Commerce and Trade to press forward on solutions for your communities. We appreciate the active dialogue and look forward to continuing our work together as a team. Sincerely, Glenn Yonkin.
That was a meeting I attended, um, with the Secretary of Agriculture, and it, it was very informative, and they are, they are very, very willing to find some solutions to the issue we have. I, I was, I was impressed. And a lot of the, the producers have done a lot of legwork, and the secretary actually took their notes and is working off of them, so.
They found somebody who can't get enough chickens. Topscot. Trouble is, they just built a mini-million-dollar plant in Nebraska, and they can't get the chickens out here. We were perfect if they hadn't have built that in Nebraska. They could have come right here.
They laying a dollar short.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, anything else before I get into the board members' comments? Mr. Jones?
All I got to say is, uh, we need people to come to the fair, participate, to help our fair out, so we can get it back like it used to be when I was a kid. It was something exciting to go to, because it was a little bit of everything for a little county. It was great. Support the sheriff's night out, and the get-togethers like Juneteenth and all, that was a good thing for the county, and, uh, we need more stuff like that in our community to bring people together.
Mr. Watt?
I don't have a lot, looking forward to the fair, rain or shine. I'll be there tomorrow, so. Other than that, um, you know, we do, we do have a lot of community events. We've had a few and a lot coming up. I heard the, uh, lavender festival went off well this year. Um, so I do appreciate their forward-thinking and, and pre-planning. I know they didn't, you know, know what was going to go on the first year, but, um, that seemed to be well-received this time. So, yeah, just looking forward to the summer events that are coming to the community.
I'm glad you mentioned lavender festival, it's a good one. We hadn't mentioned that yet. I'm sorry I was out of town and missed that one, but I definitely heard a lot of really good things. Huge growth over last year, and yeah, it sounds like all the issues from last year, but issues were because of its success, so those were very great reasons to even have issues last year. So, uh, yeah, really good, and echo the remarks around the fair. Hope we get great turnout. Um, I know the volunteers have put a ton of effort into that. And because our next meeting will be after it, uh, we'll also then, uh, note, we've got the, um, July fourth activities, which will really be on July first, because that's the Saturday, uh, coming up at Field Days of the Past, um, location, uh, coordinated along also with the one hundred mile yard sale. So, um, you know, I think it's become our trend to really hype up, uh, local activities, but the, it's because there's so many now, and particularly after a couple of years with COVID, uh, the, kind of the dearth of them. Uh, it's exciting to see so much happening locally in Amelia, and we're all, I know, very proud of them, so it's great.
All right, all y'all come see me tomorrow. I'm in the Dunkin' booth from seven to nine. It's a dollar a ball or six for five bucks. So bring plenty of money.
Did we spend county money? Don't have to worry about that.
I think I got people coming from Chesterfield coming. I've been passing the bird around, the most hated man in the million. Let's get it. I'm going to echo about the events that are here. It's nice to have local events that you can go to on a Friday, Saturday night. I also wanted to make sure we thank the first responders and the linemen for the work they were doing Friday night. I don't know how many here were affected. We were, we were affected. We lived through it, no, nothing that we can't replace, so, but it was a lot of line trucks running around pulling wires in the dark, so. We owe a thank to them, so.
I forgot, we, we forgot one, sorry, since we're noting. I was al- also out last weekend. We had, uh, good, uh, the truck, truck and tractor pull last, last weekend, right, right after that, sorry. Just while we're getting around, uh, here, that was very well-attended also last weekend, and thank all the organizers for that one, too. Sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to have tractors and maybe some four-wheelers and stuff like that at the fair tomorrow, too. Maybe hay equipment, who knows? Sir?
There, there'd be tractors there, but they just be display tractors.
Good.
So you all be out there.
And a bandage day, too, it looks like, bandage evening, bands, bands each night.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Hill, you're on the fair committee, would you like to give a little?
Come on out.
Okay.
We've been doing it for over a year, so please, whether or not to be out there. There's a protein t-shirt contest, there's fans, there is a kids' zone, there's cowboys, there is all sorts of things, come on out. It's, it's like you said, it's all brand new, little kids, the older kids, there's something for everyone. So come on out, the prices are cheaper, it's only five dollars a year. You get in the kids' zone for the pride goods, there might be a little moist, but try to bring them out there. Come on out, enjoy yourselves, please. I mean, it's a lot of good work through the committee over a year that they've been planning this.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about the weather, but you come on out.
Rain or shine, right? Tomorrow, rain or shine tomorrow.
Every night, every rain or shine.
Uh, what's the distance to the Dunkin' booth? We got to throw the ball.
Can I cheat and get a little closer?
Come up and push it. You just bring your handful of money. Oh, you say it's too short?
I think so.
Hey, there's a couple hours still available, somebody else get up there.
They're scared. All of them are scared.
I'm scared.
All right, what, somebody get high to a girl.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So where's the move?
Okay.
World of the year, right?
Hell, I'm living on, I got a bathing suit. Come on in.